This program is brought to you by cable franchise fees and generous donations from viewers like you.
Seeing a presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order our meeting of the regional school committee. At six thirty two P M on Tuesday, December twenty first. We'll start with a roll call. When I call your name, please confirm that you're present. Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington present.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer present.
Mr. Stamo.
Stamo present.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser present.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan present.
And McDonald present. Thank you. And we're joined by Ms. Scott and Dr. Morris. First up tonight is, as always, our approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes. The week from our last meeting, full meeting on December seventh, and then from our budget meeting and budget forum on December sixteenth, and both are attached in the agenda. Does anybody have any edits? Seeing none, a move that we approve the minutes of December seventh and December sixteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Stamo. Any further discussion? Other than thank you again, Ms. Scott, for such wonderfully accurate minutes. And we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer aye.
Mr. Stamo.
Stamo aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan aye.
And McDonald aye. The motion passes unanimously. And next up is public comments, and we have one that I attached just shortly before this meeting to the agenda, and I will share my screen. I will make a note that, starting with tonight's meeting, we have a new public comment email address. Thanks to Jerry Champagne and his team for helping us out with that. It is now a does not come to myself, but folks are welcome to continue to email school committee with 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 general comments, but for specific public comment emails that to be included in public comment. The email address is in the board docs agenda, and it's S C for School Committee, Public Comment, all one word, at A R P S dot org. And so, as as mentioned, that that email address is included on our agendas, and we'll be going forward. And we'll go to the will be email that comes in there with by three P M on the date of the meeting will be included in the printed and and broadcast written public comment. And we continue to accept voice messages as well that can be attached to an email to that email address or could be sent to our phone number. And we did not receive any recorded phone phone messages for tonight. So moving along, and we will move on next to the superintendent's update. I'll turn that over to you, Dr. Morris.
Thank you so much, Herr McDonald. So we're really pleased that we had a really high turnout at the second vaccine clinic we had last week. It was, for some folks, especially kids, a second shot clinic, some adults as well, but primarily ended up being a booster clinic. We opened it up to not just our staff and students, but also our larger community. And I believe there were sixty two people who got booster shots that day because the demand was high and I think continued to grow, given fears of increasing case counts in Massachusetts. We've opened up another with our state, the the state-run mobile clinic, another date on January fifth. So just want to, this was emailed out to all families and all staff, but just encourage folks to consider if they're looking for a booster, apparently they're hard to find, particularly in Hampshire County, without having to drive down to Hampden County. We've been really pleased with the support and service that the company has given. They have a number of people who live in our community actually working for them, which is kind of nice, including parents in our district. So that's been that's been kind of an additional bonus that they have folks out here working. It's not only people coming from south and from the east. And so there are still slots available either for, you know, children or for adults, and that includes boosters for sixteen plus, as well as first and second shot series for anyone five plus. And they've arranged, if you want Moderna, if you want Pfizer, you want J and J, they've got sort of the full complement when folks register. The second part of that is that Pfizer, this week, a couple of days ago, applied for full F D A approval for their twelve to fifteen-year-old vaccine. According to the Amherst Board of Health vote, that would mean that it that would become it would become a requirement of our schools. If the F D A approves Pfizer for twelve to fifteen-year-olds, that was noted in the communication to families. Just so if folks are waiting, you know, that wait may be pretty short before that becomes a requirement. We'll we'll bring it back here in terms of a timeline. We certainly wouldn't expect families to have it immediately done, but it seems likely that that will happen. So just worth noting, and we want to, the clinic's January fifth at the high school, three to five or three to six. And I know, I don't think there's that many appointments, three to three thirty, but after three thirty, there's there's still plenty of appointments available. So we want to make sure that that's available and accessible to anyone in the community who is interested. A second thing I want to note is that this morning, we sent an email to all staff and all families that we are able to, working with the collaboration with the town of Amherst. On Thursday, students and staff will each be able to walk home with to a box of two fifteen-minute rapid COVID tests. You know, these are in very high demand. I was talking to someone in the committee before the meeting about that that local pharmacies are saying they have them, but you get there and they don't have them, and that's true even online. So we're happy to support our local community and keep our community as safe as can be with providing those for folks. And they'll just go home in backpacks on Friday, or excuse me, Thursday afternoon. It's a early release day, but we'll try to not give them to kids with too much time for them to get lost somewhere along the way. So we have a management plan on that at each of our schools, as well as for our staff. And I think it's really important to note two things. One, this is a collaboration with the with the town. I was on a email loop with other superintendents in Western Massachusetts. There are a couple of towns doing something similar, but for the most part, the towns who received this as part of the state program are not not collaborating in the same way that our collaboration with the Amherst Health Department has has kind of blossomed and and created. So I really want to thank the Health Department for their collaboration, you know, as well as facilities and other folks, nurses who are doing the distribution. And the second thing worth noting in compliments, the Amherst Health Department, is they were really clear that, well, yes, the town of Amherst got it. Our community is interconnected, so they never contemplated not sharing it with Leverett, Chutesbury, and Pelham students. Our students all mix, and our community's health is intertwined. And so they were really clear, based on the request we had, that this would go to every student in our districts, all three districts, in fact, but I'll just speak to this one tonight, given that this is a regional meeting. So really appreciate that and the kind of, all this happened really last minute. The town found out last minute they were getting these. They were delivered like right away. And and it meant that we had a lot of scrambling to do with Rupert, with the nurses, with Robin Supranot, and with principals to figure out a distribution plan to to give out. I think it ends up being thirty one hundred boxes. But we've got our plan set for Thursday, and we're really, really pleased to be able to offer this, especially with, you know, holiday season coming up and the case counts in Massachusetts being where they are. A third thing I want to mention is, you know, we did send out an email last week that there, you know, we have some students who are struggling, which, you know, this is par for the course in terms of the national news with, you know, their actions and behaviors. We're trying to work collaboratively. It's why we added a school adjustment counselor, both at the middle school and high school, with some of the COVID funds that we received to provide additional mental health support. And what we're recognizing is that there there's another tier of students who, even with that additional mental health support in this in the schools, we need some additional resources. And so we are posting a student support coordinator position. It's funded based, thanks to Mindy Dom, our state rep, who, in the latest round of state stimulus funds, was able to support us with funds for mental health and behavioral support. So we'll be supporting that for this year with one additional position at the middle school and one additional position at the high school. You know, I think gross oversimplification, but the challenges of the pandemic have been particularly hard on adolescents. And what we renew that going in, that's why we added additional mental health support to both of the schools. And we're recognizing that we need to continue to add support so that students get what they need, so they can be successful in school. I think it's also worth noting that the vast majority of our students in the middle school, high school, continue to do the right thing, access the supports they need and are being supported to be successful. But there's another tier of students that we're not currently supporting in a way that they need us to. And so we're going to add resources and supports in hopes that they continue to work with us and we work with their families towards success. So I did want to note that. There was a communication out last week on that, and that's where we are with that. I also, last week, there was a TikTok challenge that many superintendents or many districts, and we were one of them, sent out communication about it. The Amherst Police is a great partner in that and supporting us. Thankfully, I think nationwide, it ended up not materializing into anything real, but it was very real for our students, families, and staff in terms of the concerns and fears that it created. And we could have that a whole agenda item, and I have some strong thoughts on social media, but we're not going to do that tonight. But I did want to note that we did communicate about that, and and I really want to thank the Amherst Police Department for for partnering with us and Fay Brady, in particular, for having some language that principals were able to send to their staffs about how to support students and feel supported themselves, given this kind of very twenty-first century phenomenon that we experience all too often of social media and potential threats. The last set of updates, oh, middle school winter chorus concert is January fifth. A really nice way, yes, you know, we don't have school on January sixth for Three Kings Day, so kind of perfect opportunity. You can get your vaccine, then go to a winter concert. Really, really nice combo there on the afternoon, evening of the fifth by Marcy O'Gomes, who's a fabulous choral teacher, has worked at a way with limiting attendance, but allowing for families to be able to come see their see their children and see the show. And then the auditorium's a really good setup for that in terms of being able to distance, because it's it's well oversized for what the capacity we would need allows for distancing, and the ventilation is strong. So, you know, I know it's it's hard these days, but any opportunity we can to have families in to see their kids performing is something we want to continue to do. I have received a number of questions in the last couple of days about athletics, attendance, attendance athletic events. There are some districts who have limited attendance at those indoor events because they found them to be potential causes of places where spread was occurring. I'm meeting with the Health Department later this week to get feedback and an opinion on our path forward. You know, I think at this point, our commitment is to maintain, again, much like the chorus concert, families' ability to watch their child participate in sports, whether we can maintain the somewhat raucous, intentionally raucous atmosphere of fans and in inside spaces at athletic events is is an open question. And so we'll we'll get back to to folks shortly on that. And the last thing is just an update from DESI, which is the DESI mask mandate goes through January fifteenth. Given the variant and concerns from that, they are not yet making a determination of whether that gets extended, but will by early January. Again, I'm, I have no I would love to think there's a world where we would be demasking on January fifteenth. I don't think that's the world we currently live in. So whatever the state does, I don't anticipate a shift here that soon. Actually, the last thing, I keep on going and and I keep on being more in my notes. We got received a grant from DESI for the F Y twenty-two Teacher Diversification Pilot Program for fifteen thousand dollars. Truly focused on making some of the work that you'll hear about later from Assistant Superintendent Cunningham sustainable over time. So we're pleased that DESI is supporting our efforts that are very consistent with the school committee and the community's interest about having a diverse staff. Sorry, that was a lengthier update than I had originally thought it was going to be, but just a lot of things going on. But I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
Open for questions on the superintendent's update. No questions? Just a clarification question on the the third to last item that you had about athletics. Is the M I A A providing that, or is this is is this a district or or league? Has the M I A updated its guidance? I guess that's the question.
We're fan for spectator attendance. They have not. They've been very consistent about the masking, at least through January fifteenth. Some local districts have, I don't want to sound in a way that that critiques other districts. Some districts have located have limited attendance to only their own fans. From our vantage point at the current time, our concern isn't about home or away. It's about capacity, quantity, and density of people attending those events. And so that's really what we we have to get feedback from our local experts about that and what they're seeing. I know Amherst College has banned spectators altogether from sporting events in January and February. Springfield Public Schools did that, and then they've actually canceled sports altogether for the next three weeks, given the case counts in the city of Springfield. We're not, at this point, that's not under consideration here. I have had that conversation after Springfield made that decision with the Health Department. That's not something that that we're considering here. It's really about spectator capacity, spectator attendance, and what we can manage in terms of spectator behavior. I don't mean bad behavior. I mean, just lots of people yelling, tight space, right? That kind of COVID behavior. I'm not at all referring to any, you know, behavior that was that's problematic in any typical behavior way.
Any other questions? Thank you. Sorry. Seeing none. We'll move on to the next item then, which is the chair's update, and I have a couple of items. First, the we've completed two training sessions with members of the A P E A Union on interest-based bargaining. And just finished the second of those two yesterday. And as a reminder, the our negotiating team is Ms. Lord, Ms. Kenny, and transitioning from Ms. Lord to myself. So the three of us have been participating on behalf of the school committee in that training on the interest-based bargaining. That that training will conclude on January third at the next session, which begins at, I think, at five P M. So more to come on that. And we had the budget forum, which we just reviewed the minutes last week. We had poor, no attendance at that. And one of the things that we had talked about at one of our prior committee meetings was developing another way, other mechanisms for the public and the community to provide feedback and input at this early stage of our budget process. And so I know Ms. Stanser, as Chair of the Budget Committee, has taken a look at example surveys from other districts. And so at our next meeting, we'll look at that proposal so that we can come up with other ways that we can enable the public to share ideas. But for, as always, what we we concluded at that that meeting, saying any ideas are welcome always at school committee at to the email address, schoolcommittee@arps.org, whether or not it's in the form of a response to a feedback forum or a part of a forum. Our email is is always, email is always welcome. And lastly, tonight is our last meeting with two members from Amherst. Ms. Spitzer, who's been on the committee since since I joined back in the spring of twenty eighteen, and Ms. Lord, who's been on, it seems like equally long, if not longer, because it's been since the beginning of the pandemic in twenty twenty. Brave Soul, who joined in the midst of that. And so tonight is our their last meeting. They're both moving on. And I said this at another committee meeting, but I will say it again. It's been just an honor and and really a pleasure to work with both of you over these years. It's been intense. And you both have contributed in so many ways through these whole, these group meetings in the community with our negotiating teams or in subcommittee work and advisor committee work. And it's just been, you've, it's just been a joy to sort of be a colleague with you and just my honor to serve with you. And I hope that you continue to stay engaged with with the work of the committee as as best you can going forward. And with that, we'll move on to school committee announcements. So subcommittee and and any other announcements. Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to piggyback on that, and I'm gonna, so I have a tendency towards being sentimental, so I'm gonna try to keep it brief. But I just want to want to say that I've had two colleagues on this school committee that have actually reached out to me in writing, like in a very personal way. And so that that's probably how I'm going to do most of my things. But I just want to say thank you to the two of you guys for being such supportive members of this. Like, we've been through, I want to say hecking back. I don't know if I can say the other, but we've been through a lot over these last couple of years, and I appreciate everything that you guys have done. Like I say, I'll I'll give you the long-winded version in writing. I feel like I should flex the penmanship a little bit like you guys did to me. But thank you, and and I'll definitely miss the two of you. You're awesome.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm terrible at goodbyes. Very unarticulate and rambling if I get going, so I won't want to subject you to that. Maybe we can connect offline and and talk, but, you know, like, one one aspect that I think both of your service records have exemplified is this idea that that school committee, a public service, but I think school committee in particular, at least at least from my experience, is this like, is this iceberg experience where, you know, people see you, if they watch the meetings at all, at these meetings, and you can get the perception that this is all that the, you know, that the service is, that the job is, is to come and attend and listen and comment and ask questions, and then you're done. And it's, this is obviously a very important piece, but it's it's by far not the majority slice of the pie. And each of you has done so much good work, so much foundational work that we're going to continue to benefit from over the years, both during the pandemic and Ms. Spitzer before the pandemic on this and in other other committees. And and in such a non-promoting way, that if you did serve on the committee, you would have no idea about it, really, unless you're really trying to pay attention. So I just wanted to thank you for for the sacrifice that you've made. You've sacrificed time away from your your families and from from your own interests and and given it to the community. And like Mr. Harrington was alluding to, we we went through the fires in the last year and a half. And that is that is a experience of of supportive togetherness that I I will always look back on in appreciation for the the spirit in which in which you approached it. So I'm I'm almost about to contradict my promise not to ramble, so I'll just say thank you again and take care and hopefully we can connect in the future.
Dr. Morris.
I will, much like Mr. Demling and Mr. Harrington, I'll try to be as brief as I can and and follow up in other ways. But I think, you know, from my perspective, whatever superintendent I think wants in a school committee manner, at its heart, right, there's all the public part, like this part. But essentially, what a superintendent benefits from is having school committee members who he can go to for counsel and advice on a one-to-one basis when it's an area of a school committee's particular members' particular interest. And in very different ways, I've connected, you know, in other meetings, sometimes public meetings, sometimes individual conversations with both Hala and and Carrie, with both of you. And it's, you've made me better as a superintendent, which, you know, is something that I take very seriously in my work and and trying to be as good at my work as I can. And I can't do that if I don't have school committee members who are both pushing me, but also sending me articles and giving me feedback and advice through some difficult situations. And certainly, it's been a challenging time in many ways for for both of your tenures. I know that they're not totally the same, but they overlap quite a bit. So I just really want to share an appreciation from my vantage point, how much you've contributed to my work in the district. So thank you very much.
Any other announcements? Ms. Spitzer.
Well, I can't end without saying a huge thank you, not only for the kind words of today, but just for the first of all, you know, just for the opportunity to serve this school district, you know, I I don't think I say this. I say this often, but, you know, I I grew up in Amherst and attended these, you know, the regional schools and and have gotten so much out of them, both personally and now, you know, as a school committee member. I really enjoyed serving with all of you. It was, I think I said this at the last committee meeting, but, you know, I got elected and a few days later found out I was expecting my third kid. So I thought, you know, I'll get through serving with a newborn, and then I'll run for a second term, and that term will be so much easier. And then COVID happened. So it's been a really challenging two terms for very different reasons. And I just also, you know, want to say that, you know, I think Peter said about the iceberg. It's also true that, like, nobody serves alone. So like, you know, without my partner's support and the support of my family, this would have been really challenging, and they have served as much as I have in terms of, like, hours of meetings and and time apart. So thank you all, and don't worry, I'm not going anywhere. If anything, I'm just taking a bit of a break. But I'm, I do hope everybody will keep in touch. So thank you, and I wish that we were ending on, you know, I really thought when I made the decision to not to run that COVID would hopefully be behind us, given vaccines and stuff. So it it just, it saddens me that I'm not, that I'm cycling off and COVID is still here and that we're still doing this remote instead of in person at high school. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements from the school committee or subcommittees? Seeing none. Okay, and we'll move on to new and continuing business. And first up is new courses, new course proposals for the high school. And we've been joined by a bunch of folks. And I, before I turn it over, I'll just say this is always my favorite, favorite meeting of the year. It sort of reminds us why we're here, or is one of the reasons of that, sort of reminding us about the value of the work that our schools do, and it's just, it's just a pleasure. So I look forward to hearing from each of you. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Sadiq and Dr. Morris.
Dr. Morris. For a quick second. So just second, Ms. McDonald's thoughts, I think, one of the hallmarks of our district, in particular, our high school, is that things change, and our high school changes along with it, right? So our students' interests change, the world changes, our own understanding of the world changes. And I think at the high school level, so much of the work is really trying to support our children's understanding of the world around them in deeper levels because of where they are developmentally. And we have a fantastic faculty who leads us in this work, and you'll get to meet some of them tonight. So thank you all for being here. I know it's a crazy week and really appreciate the folks at the high school for taking time to share with us in a brief way, you know, some of the ideas for the new courses. My recommendation is that we hear from the folks one at a time and see if there's questions after each person, Ms. McDonald, if that's okay, has spoken, so that if they want to go off to other responsibilities they have, they they can do that and that we hold a vote at the end for all of them in bulk, if that's okay. And if there's an issue with that, we can jump to it later. But I think with that, I will turn it over to Principal Sadiq from the high school, who can get us going. So thank you for being here, Tal.
All right, it's my pleasure. So I'm gonna actually keep it brief. We have some of our department heads and other teachers here to present the amazing new courses they've been working on proposing. I'm sure you'll be as impressed as I was in hearing them over the time they've been developing. So without further ado, I know you've been given a list of the courses, so we're just going to go through the list. So the first person up is Sarah Barbara Justice, Department Head of our English Department.
Hi, everybody. This is fun. I haven't been to a school committee meeting in a while. So thanks for for hearing our proposal. So thanks for, for hearing our proposals. So I'm gonna start with a course that I designed with the help of a lot of people called Disability Justice Literature, which I am proposing as a nine-week quarter-long elective for seniors. And also potentially as an ALPS, an independent study for anyone who missed out on taking it in the, in the general education program. So for example, special education students who weren't taking a Gen Ed English class might be able to access that as well. So as you all know, there, we have a lot of great electives in English, we, for seniors, things like LGBTQ Lit, contemporary literature, African-American literature. And for a really long time, I've thought that we should address students' understanding and knowledge about disability justice and disability literature. And, and I've been working toward this course proposal for about five years. I'm gonna just talk for a minute or two about the background and then just read the course description and you can ask me whatever questions you'd like to ask. So I'm part of a Critical Disability Studies group online of hundreds of college professors in the US and Canada, who are doing this work at the college level. It's exploding right now, disability studies. So I had access to a lot of what people are doing throughout the country. I read over 30 books before starting to work on this proposal. I attended a lot of workshops. I also met with former ARHS students, many of whom are studying this in college right now. And then once I felt like I had a pretty strong footing in the material, I developed an ALPS with a student. I'm working currently with a student who is disabled, who's passionate about disability justice and who said many times to me when I was his sophomore teacher, I, I care so much about this and I feel like I live this experience every day, but it's not a part of the curriculum. It's not something that I get to learn about in school with other students. So he and I worked together, we designed the curriculum, we tested it out. It's been, I would say, like really life-changing or like perspective-changing to, to see, to read these books. Like he's, he's currently reading one of them and saying like, it's blowing my mind, like to, to hear other people like describing the world the way that I see it. Once we, we're almost at the end of that semester and I finished all of the required curriculum for my sophomore. So I just started testing out a unit with my sophomore class. They watched the film Crip Camp, they learned about the history of disability justice and activism. They learned a lot of terminology around disability and they're currently reading this memoir called Sitting Pretty by Rebecca Tausick. It's called Sitting Pretty, The View From My Ordinary, Resilient Disabled Body. A number of them also read The Secret Life of a Black Aspie for their honors project as an independent read. And even within a few days of talking about this in class, they, they have started to express pride in, in having a disability. Students who are non-disabled have started to talk with like empathy and clarity about how they might work to make the world more accessible. It's been so inspiring, like I, I actually almost started crying in one class just to hear the way that my students were talking in a way that I've never heard them talk before. So the description of the course is the last thing I'll read and then you can fire away with questions. Though people with disabilities are the largest minority group in the world and a sizable percentage of students have diagnosed and undiagnosed disabilities, literature by disabled writers and concept of, concepts of disability justice are rarely centered in public school curricula. This quarter-long course will introduce students to important disabled writers and activists, critical moments of disability history in the United States, including activism to pass ADA and 504 legislation and to end institutionalization, and the transformative work of the BIPOC and queer-led Disability Justice Collective over the last two decades. Students will explore social and cultural models of disability, visible and invisible disabilities, ableism and disability justice, and webs of care, especially among disabled people on the margins. Class readings include Sitting Pretty, Disability Visibility by Alice Wong, The Secret Life of a Black Aspie, which I mentioned, and Brilliant Imperfection: Grappling with Cure by Eli Claire, as well as numerous films that explore the lives and experiences of disabled people. And the last thing I'll say is just that there are so many, there have been so many really like incredible portrayals of disabled people in, in fiction and in film, but every single text in this course is by disable, they're by disabled writers or creators, they're not about their, their by. And they're all memoirs, essays, plays and nonfiction pieces. So it's like really hearing from people themselves. I hope that was five minutes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the committee? Mr. Stammel.
It's not a question, I would just say that it just sounds like a remarkable course. And, you know, I wish, I wish back, back near the dinosaur age when I was in high school, I really wish I'd have courses like that. Wonderful work. It sounds like a lot of work too, so I really commend you.
Thank you so much. It's been such a pleasure, truly.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, I mean, I would echo Mr. Stammel's description of remarkable. I mean, the, this is exactly the kind of innovative, progressive thing that we wanna be focusing on. And, and it's not, I, I love the, how you described the background of how this came about and not just what the course is. Like, cause it's, you know, clearly this wasn't just an idea that you came up with some weekend or, you know, that was trending on Twitter. Like you've been invested in it and you did the, the hard work to lay the foundation. So that, that's just great. I, I would, I think CPAC would, would love a presentation of this if you, you know, assuming this is approved tonight. One of their upcoming meetings, you know, if you had opportunity, it's a really great point of view. I guess the only question I had is, have you, have you had any thoughts about, would there be ways of taking some of the content, not the whole course, but, but some of it, integrating it into the, the, the standard English curriculum somewhere in, in nine to 12 or maybe seven to 12? Another reason I ask is that, you know, there may be students who are open to being moved by these kinds of experiences, but, but might not think to, you know, sign up for a credit for them. And so, but if they were, you know, maybe exposed to this different point of view, they may, you know, benefit from it, like some of your students had, testing it out. Yeah, that's all I had.
Well, I, I already have the answer to that question, which is that I've already decide, like with, just because I've started to test this out, my other 10th grade teachers who all teach the required 10th grade course with me have decided that they all wanna teach a whole unit. So they all want to teach like Sitting Pretty, which is that memoir, Crip Camp, Disability Justice, like history and activism. They, so that is going to be a required part of the sophomore curriculum, which is a required course for all students, including exiting ELL students, if you approve it. Cause I do think it should be required for everyone and then the elective, if we move some things. So the seniors this year ahead would be people who never got that and they would get that book. And then eventually, once all the sophomores have had it, I would replace that book in the upper level curriculum and, and add some new materials so that they could expand their knowledge when they're seniors. I love that idea. I think everyone has to have it.
I, I was wondering that, I had the same question in my head, from your description of, of workshopping this in your, in your 10th grade class, like it seems like a course, a topic that should be integrated and everything. So that's exciting to hear. Ms. Love.
I want to thank you, Sarah Barber Just. I'm panicking a little because I sit here with a disability in fear and trepidation about talking about it. And I haven't served the public because I haven't been as verbal about it, because the stigma and the fear. So I think having this in our curriculum and exposing it to all of us at an earlier age will help. And I just, I'm, I'm not gonna cry, but I just thank you for making this a priority because it's super important and I, I really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that one, one other thing that I note is the, not just the number of years that you've been working on this, but also that with the idea of the ALPS, which is for, I'm gonna probably, probably get this wrong, but that's Alternative Learning Program? Is that what that's, yeah. We were talking about the ALPS in one of our recent meetings when we were just talking about enrollment and class size. And I, and I think this is an example of how valuable that is, not just for the students, but also for the development and evolution of curriculum and, and coming up with unique courses like this and sort of being able to try new things and innovate through that program, following student interests and desires. And, and, you know, something that I think really makes our school really super unique and, and innovative and a great place to be. So appreciate hearing that. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, it's hard to follow Sarah Barber Just. I'm next. Hi, everybody. I'm Kristin Ripley. I'm not allowed to share my screen. I have a whole bunch of things to show you, but that's okay.
Oh, Kristin, I'll, I'll open it up, see if you can share your screen.
Oh goodness, okay. Oh, no, it's okay. This feels very like remote learning last year. I was having a little, a little flashback and being flexible. It's okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You should be able to do that right now.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, so I'm, I'm new to the high school. I've been at the middle school for the past, past four years. And so all the images of artwork that I put in this brief slideshow are all from my middle school days, which have been everything up until this year. And so I, I guess I will start by also sharing a little story. So Fiber Arts, in which I will, I'm actually gonna go to the next slide because this is what my story is about. So the students that you, whose arms and hands you see here, I discovered this my first year at the middle school when I started to do an embroidery unit with all my eighth graders. And I decided we were gonna do slow selfies, which, and I had students find a selfie and print it out and we kind of transferred them to the paper and we started to learn about stitches. And I discovered that this subset of students that was, they were amazing at sewing and really, really good at embroidery. And it's not, it's not a group of students that I would have expected to have this knowledge. And I learned that a lot of them grew up spending most of their time with, with grandparents and with older family members and a lot of time with family. They picked up these skills of knowing how to use thread, knowing how to repair their clothes, knowing how, how to sew. And so I just kind of went deeper and deeper and found that just a huge cross-section of our population has this, what I, what I call ancestral knowledge, not, that's not my term, but like I, I believe that, you know, people have been making for centuries, right? And this like connection to how, to making is, is really alive and, and thriving in our students' families and home lives. And it's not, there's no, there's not a lot of place for that at school sometimes. And so I, I want to teach fiber arts. I hope that this is approved because, because I think it's, it's a, a kind of art-making that appeals to, to a lot of students, but to some students who don't find themselves interested or feel, I don't know, feel like painting or drawing is their thing. Fiber arts is really flexible and really exciting and engages students, but I just, I wouldn't have expected to be engaged in art-making. So we also don't have anything like this at the high school right now. So this would be another, another kind of art-making to add to the students' repertoire, which is exciting. There's already a lot of really exciting art offerings. So, so I am going to just kind of show you a couple of things. And I know you have the document anyway. So this course is an introduction to creating 2D and 3D artworks. And we'll be using, you know, fabric, thread, yarn, paper, dyes and organic materials. And I'm, I'm hoping to be able to get some sewing machines, but a lot of it will be just hand-making. So students will learn methods of construction with these materials like sewing, knitting, crochet, embroidery and weaving. And those will be like foundational strategies to incorporate into other pieces of work, either sculptural or, or 2D work. And the units of study that I have planned out, although I, I will hopefully devote more, are soft sculpture, drawing with thread, making decorative and functional books, mapping memories, so like weaving with organic and synthetic materials. And then some pretty deep dives into craft and like fibers as part of protest and social justice movements. And that, I, I have a little bit more to kind of talk about that. But so one, one of the, one of the big, kind of big ideas that I wanna explore is why fibers matter and why, how they're relevant in contemporary art, as well as like what the role of fibers are in the context of contemporary social justice movements. And, and another thing that I think we'll probably grapple with for the entire, entire course, but something that just kind of a thread running through it is exploring how to honor and preserve traditions and ancestral knowledge while engaging in contemporary practices, which I think is a tension that, that is really exciting and interesting and can really make for some really deep, deep work. I'd love your questions.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Stammel.
Well, again, I'm kind of blown away by, by a course like this and not just by the, the art or the product, but because you are, and the course is validating kids' lives and kids' tradition and, and recognizing, you know, many cultures and all the different ways people are brought up. And it's just, it's a combination of so many wonderful things that it's just fantastic.
Thank you. I think so too.
Ms. Spitzer.
I'm also very enthusiastic about this course. You know, when I was in school, we'd have home economics and we'd learn to sew in that class. And I kind of like that this is taking it out of that very gendered framework and, and moving it in, in kind of elevating it into this more, you know, embracing it as an art form. So thank you. And I, I guess I'm just curious, so there aren't any other sewing or fiber arts-related courses being offered in the high school right now?
There are not. There used to be some courses related to clothing and home ec, of course. But not, not right now.
Ms. Kenny, did you have your hand up?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I love that this was a way for students who didn't tend to show a lot of interest in art to find their place. And I know sometimes you have to try a lot of different kinds of art to find the kind that speaks to you. And so having another opportunity for kids who aren't necessarily usually particularly engaged in, in art or feel like their craft isn't seen as being artistic, that, that they have a space for this. So I think it's fantastic.
Ms. Dancer.
Hi, I, as a fiber artist today myself, I just think that it's terrific to be bringing this into the schools. I grew up learning all these skills from my grandmother, but the idea of turning them into art has come to me later in my life. And it's a different kind of art than painting and drawing. You can use your hands. And I just, I think bringing this, fiber art is expanding and becoming a more accepted art form today, along with the traditional arts. And for students to be introduced to it at this time in their lives, I think is a really good thing. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments and questions. I think the like tension between fine art and craft and making is all really interesting and rich. And we'll see what happens. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Yep. Who's next?
I think if we're going in the, the order of the new course proposal, I think.
I think if we're going in the, the order of the new course proposal, I think engineering and technology is, is next. And I'm just going to do a little introduction to John Fable, who I think has made the call. He was having some little technical hiccups, but we're very lucky to have John Fable used us. Or he joined us this year and has already contributed greatly and is trying to, is interested in starting a new course, which is called Engineering for Social Good. And with that, I'll hand off to John. Are you there, John?
Or I might do the presentation myself.
No, John.
Yep. Yep. Here, here I am. I, I am for some reason not able to queue up the presentation. I had to switch computers in order to get on, but if someone could, could, could present the PowerPoint.
I can do that. So why don't I share my screen and I'll do my best to kind of toggle through it for you.
Sharing should be on for, for anyone. If you have tech problems, you know, I can definitely.
Okay, it's, it's on now. Okay. It was grayed out earlier. So let me, uh, let me, uh, okay, see if I can get that. I wasn't able to get that up earlier. So I'm going to have to, pardon me while I, while I queue that up again. I'm, I'm on.
I, I got it for you here, John.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, it's a wonderful to be, to, to be here. And because I'm, although I'm new to ARHS as a teacher, I'm, I'm not new to teaching, but I'm also not new to ARHS because I'm actually an alum. And I love sharing the story that one of my most influential teachers of all my education was a high school science teacher, Charlie Kemp. And in some sense, I'm sort of have, have some of his role now. And that's kind of for me like this, this tarmac arc. So very satisfying. So, so one of the reasons for the origin of this course is, well, in part because we are being tremendous interest in engineering and tech courses that we're seeing and just a need for more offerings. But it's more nuanced in that. One is that this is sort of a slightly more advanced. We're finding that students run out of the tech offerings and they're like, wait, you mean there's no more? But also that there is a real interest, I would even describe it as a hunger for engaging in real world problems. How do I get, how do I get traction on something that really means to me? So this is a variation on a, a, a course type of course that I've, I've run in various contexts for the last 20 some odd years. And in part draws on part of my background as a practitioner, as well as an educator in working on, I would say progressive problem solving and design and engineering related sort of global challenges, socio, socioeconomic, environmental challenges. And just finding that students really, really want to touch that, if you will. So the idea is a multidisciplinary project based course. And explicitly multidisciplinary because all of the juicy problems tend to be multidisciplinary. So how do we learn how to become comfortable engaging and working our way around those problems? The core idea is to identify and identify solutions to problems that we have in our own environments. And how do we develop those? Well, there's a really very, I would say powerful empathic approaches to how we interact with community and learn from community about what the needs are. And based on that, how do we then learn how to translate that into possible solutions? And not only come up with ideas for that, but as much, how do we actually translate that into actual, you know, actionable action, if you will, right? And that notion of how do you get something out of your head and make it tangible? So, so example, so, so the idea is actually, if you go back to one, one, one slide. So identify a problem, brainstorm some solutions, go through and learn various problem solving strategies and get some rubber on the road. And in the end, really, what's it like to translate an idea, especially something you're passionate about, into some sort of effective action? So that's really kind of the core. Some examples that, the next page there. And again, these are just the kinds of things that in my experience sort of tend to come up are, hey, we want to do something about energy efficiency in the school or cafeteria food waste. And these are not necessarily ideas that they're coming up with, but ideas that they are soliciting from the community, engaging the community with. How do you have that listening based approach? Okay. Next, next slide. This is the rationale, went through some of that earlier on. Part of this is also an opportunity to provide some more advanced courses, right? Right now we have some very basic introductory, but there really is an interest desire and I would say, say need for more advanced courses. It's an opportunity to engage at a community level and create some relevance there. And there's, you know, deep interest in social and environmental justice in the school community. And this is one way of kind of tapping and connecting and really building off of that. And again, I talked earlier about sort of the kinds of things that students really are, in my experience, is really hungering for. Okay, slide. It's inclusive by design, right? Students work in collaborative teams and part of what we're learning here is how do we include people within teams? How do we include people? How do we engage people from within, from within the community? And so really very much so by design. And this whole notion of agency and praxis, I think, is really core thread. Think of sort of, I would say pedagogical thread that runs through here. How is this sense of I have some agency, right? And how do I affect that? So I will say that, that in my experience around courses like this, making becomes almost like a metaphor for agency. And even if you're constructing or building something, there's this notion of I was able to have an idea, take an idea and translate it into something. And that seems to carry out beyond across disciplines. So, and also because it's not explicitly sort of technical engineering, you know, it doesn't say engineering, right? It, in my experience draws from a, can draw from a broader demographic. That's been my experience anyway. So again, that's another reason to do it. And this is Sophie, who for the first time in her life ever built something with her hands. And now she's studying architecture. So I think, I think we've talked about the course objectives. They were, I've sort of touched on some of those themes already. And a lot of ways, one of the core moves is how do we work on, how do we deal with open ended, multidisciplinary challenges, right? Because so much of what we learn is, okay, here's what we're learning today and here's how you need to work on these problems. And this kind of turns that around and says, okay, here's an open ended problem. How do you work with that? How do you work with that in concrete ways? So, uh, and also I think again, building in the notion of the social context of engineering decision making, which is so much of what we're dealing with now, for example, in both social and environmental issues. So, next slide. This is a fabulous book by a fabulous individual, Paul Pollock, who I at one point got to meet. And actually he was invited to do some work with him. And so I'll be bringing in readings from this book as well as from other areas. But it really puts an interesting spin on the connection between what I would say, the best of engineering thinking and problem solving and just real world, just fundamental, how do we get clean water kinds of issues? And it's, it's very poetic in its writing as well. So next slide. It's a syllabus. And I think the main point behind the syllabus is that it is designed to evolve. It's really going to be driven by the, the nature of the problem or opportunity that the students identify. And the real front end setup is in how do we learn to identify and articulate problems in a community context? And work through a iterative problem solving process. And this is, in, in this sense, it's a, it's a builds on the sort of the pedagogical framework that I've been working on for the last 20 some odd years around working with this. So the open ended nature of it is something that I, I can say I have a lot of confidence in, in its viability. And I mentioned that because it's, the open ended is, is not necessarily something that is commonly seen. But this is a, I would say a pretty typical arc of what a course would look like this on a sort of quarterly or semestral basis. Costs. Well, I think there's sort of really two, two points here. One is the cost of, of, of the book. And there's likely, there may well be, I would say there's more likely not to be some project material costs. But what those are likely to be, I think, is highly contextual, highly dependent on the nature of the, the product. And I think that that's, you know, something that can definitely point students towards low tech, low cost solutions, which is, so it has own pedagogical value on a number of levels as well. So that's, yeah. There we go. Those are some, some of those here students. Thank you. Yeah. I'm, I'm, I have to say, I'm thrilled to be able to, one of the reasons I was excited to become part of the ARPS community is the opportunity to, to work with people on courses like this. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, John. And we did, um, you know, we talked a lot about this course and it's kind of, I, I almost think of it, if you're looking for a model for it, it's kind of engineers without borders. The border being kind of the classroom walls, the school walls. We're now going outside to kind of solve some real problems.
And Paul, Paul Pollock was actually one of the founders of Engineers Without Borders. Yeah.
That's a, that's a, again, a really, really exciting and really interesting sounding course that sort of makes me want to be in high school again, only briefly. Mr. Harrington.
I just want to throw out the full disclosure. I am like hyper biased towards a course like this. This is, this like speaks to my soul. Like, I mean, and, and it speaks to my day job a lot. So I was just kind of curious if you had thought about reaching out to folks in like the facilities department? Cause this reads a lot like my job description, if I'm being honest with you. I know a guy there that might be a useful contact perhaps.
Yeah, no. So, so when I talk about the, the school community, that's exactly who I pictured. Absolutely. And I actually, one of the courses that I ran, when I, I taught a variation of this at Hampshire College and the physical plant director like basically came to the class. He, he basically became, attended the class.
So that's gonna be my next question is, can I audit your class, please?
Oh, yeah. I would love it if you came. I really, I really would actually. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for this, for the offering and the presentation. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Dunming.
Yeah, I'm just briefly, otherwise we'll be here all night if we just talk about everything that we, that we found amazing. So yes, like plus one to what Mr. Harrington said, this, this is an amazing course. And I, I think that the theme that's emerging here for me that we'll probably hear more about in the subsequent, subsequent speakers is that, you know, like we have great schools because we have great teachers. We've, we've said that a thousand times on school committee and I'm sure we'll say it again. But to have staff who, who take the initiative, the proactive effort, you know, not knowing that it'll become a reality, to bring these things forward. And I, I think Mr. Fable mentioned, um, taking an idea you're passionate about and turning it into effective action. I mean, that's exactly what we're hearing about tonight. Like passionate teachers turning it into these, these innovative courses. And, and I would love for the committee to think about ways that we can showcase these offerings in a more prominent way. Cause I think, you know, we have the school committee meeting and this is great if you're watching it. But you know, it's, it's, it's over and it's done. And so what's, what's a permanent way that we can present that? And maybe this is working with some of the teachers who are so passionate about these, these topics into a way to, you know, put it together on a section of our website, some interactive way where people can get really excited about these things that you really can't find anywhere else. And, you know, we, we exist in a competitive marketplace here in ARHS. And you know, the better that we can do with, with keeping kids in our district and getting them to come to our high school, the more funding we'll have to then support efforts like this. So I just want to say thank you for all of the going above and beyond the call of duty efforts from our, our teachers tonight.
Are you, are you ready for the next one?
I think we are.
Okay, okay. I am going to present this again here. And this one here, I will be presenting, but I'm joined here by Julie Hammond and Ned Young, who are my, my backup and who will actually be teaching the course. But I said, I'd take the lead on kind of presenting it just because I kind of know the history and where it kind of fits into the sequence. So the next course that we're presenting here is an advanced robotics course. We have a introduction to robotics engineering currently at the high school. And so this will be the next level. Again, we're, we're trying to kind of add, like John referred to or talked about, having kind of sequential classes and some more advanced classes in our engineering sequence. And this would be one of them. So it is a sequential class. It's prob, uh, project based learning. And it's just going to have students doing a little bit more than they, they do in the introductory course. The big difference here is our current robotics course uses Lego robotics, which you can kind of see here, which is great. And it's very quick and easy for students to kind of put things together and gets kids hooked on robotics. And then it also uses block programming, which, and if anybody's familiar with kind of Scratch, it allows you to kind of drag and drop different modules in, which mimics how we do coding in the real world. However, it becomes very cumbersome. And this is certainly block programming isn't what actual robotic engineers do when they're trying to write code. And so we're going to try to kind of step it up here. And we'll be using these VEX robots, which we actually currently have. We were able to get this through some Perkins funds. And so we have these robots. And as you can see here, it does a little bit more to putting them together. And you can manufacture, actually manufacture components for them. And so instead of going to the bin and just picking whatever from what Legos you have, we can actually fabricate some components to get the robot to do what we want to do. And then the other thing is it's going to be more realistic line based coding. So they'll be doing all of the codes and all of the different functions that they do with block programming, except they'll actually be doing the line based coding, which is more realistic. The goals is to build on their prior programming and robotics courses and integrating projects focused on solving local school based and community problems, robotics. And have solved a lot of problems in our world. And we would like to kind of have that sort of angle to the course and that focus of the course is how do we use these to do good things and to improve our world? So the course focuses on some big ideas, engineering design process, programming, functions and logic, computer coding, integrated components. How do we get them to work together to do a complex function manufacturing technique? So building those little components that we want to put together. Problem solving and innovation. Students will be working in groups, collaboration. And then we'd like to also kind of have again, a, a social justice angle to the course. Then, um, so they'll be using the same sort of things that they use in the other course, except they just are real, real servos and real components this time that take a little bit of finesse to kind of get them to work. But these, this is the same VEX system that they use for robotics competitions around the world, around the country. And so this is, we're just getting more advanced here. And you can read this here, but these are all of the, the key things that if you talk to anybody who works in with robotics, would say these are the, the key functions of robots that you need to be able to understand, to be able to build something, to perform whatever task you are interested in. that you need to be able to understand to be able to build something to perform whatever task you are interested in. The costs for the program are none. That's the beauty of it. So we already have these things. And so we're just looking for an excuse to use them. And so this would give us an opportunity to, to put these robots to use. And there is one scooting around right there. Julie, do you have anything to add?
Um, just a little background. So I'm currently the lab coordinator at the high school. But I've taught engineering and electronics at previous schools. And so this year I talked to Mr. Harrison, one of our engineering teachers, and who asked me to see if I could get the VEX robotics working. And so I was told that we'd invested this money in them prior to COVID and then COVID hit. And now they've just been sitting in a box in a closet. So I spent a few days, we had to install the software. It's called Robot C, but it's based on the C++ programming language, which I have experience with. And so we downloaded the firmware to the robots and lo and behold, the robots started moving, you know, waving its arm around. And based on the numbers that you enter into the computer code, you can make it move faster or travel longer distances and so on, so forth. So I would love to kind of design some curriculum for it and do a project based learning kind of curriculum, especially for trying to design adaptive devices for people with disabilities. But it's up to you. So I'm, I'm hopeful for the future of this course and either I could be interested in teaching it if the opportunity arises. I know Mr. Young is amazing at teaching computer programming. So I, I think there's a lot of potential in here. So thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Questions? I'll just say yet again, this is really exciting. I'm just ever amazed at the, the courses and particularly in the, in the engineering department, because I don't, I feel like that's maybe not super, super unique, but I feel like unique in our area. And it's just a really amazing offering. And particularly focused on all the project based learning and design thinking and, and design process in here to solve problems. It's great to see. Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so I believe I'm next up on the proposal list. My name is Brittany Upchurch and I teach health and phys ed here at the high school. And so we've got two proposals that we're looking to move forward to you all this evening. The first one that I'll discuss is our net wall and target games. And over the last few years, we've, we've taken a redesign to our elective phys ed classes in hopes of engaging all different students in movement and movement in the gym. It's no surprise that the gymnasium as a classroom can be pretty uncomfortable place for, for people, especially with just varying abilities around experience and sport and, and movement. But then also just, you know, the opportunities that we've afforded our, our community, right? So we took some time, just as a little background, to reengage our now invasion games class as offense invading defense and, and working through different skill concepts there, as well as our recreational games class. And so this next course would focus primarily on net wall and target games, which we're fortunate enough to have a whole host of equipment that can be used here. And there's been so many students over, especially the past year, that have been like, oh, Miss Upchurch, you know, I'd really love to spend more time with volleyball. Or we got to play this new game Nitro Ball, which is just inverted volleyball. And I'd love it if we got to, you know, play that some more as well. So our goal again is just to create another space for, for students to engage in movement, to develop a foundation of knowledge and really keep, you know, primarily focusing on teaching games for understanding and giving our students the ability and the knowledge to really find, you know, their niche and their movement. And if we've learned anything from this pandemic, it's that we all feel better when we find ways that we love to move. And so this is just one way that we can do that. Again, as I said, you know, rationale certainly being that we're, we're looking to expand upon our course offerings. You know, work with as many diverse learners as we can. And the beauty of our electives is that they are nine through 12. So any student is eligible for this class. And we'd love to have them. The only other thing, you know, I'll say here again, is that we do have a whole host of equipment that can be used here. And three phys ed and health educators that would be more than willing to take on this course next school year. And then the other elective that we're looking to propose to you all this evening is a foundations of personal fitness class. So we already have a strength and conditioning class at the high school. And it's been successful for many years now. And for the seven years that I've been teaching at ARHS, we haven't had a foundation course prior to. But to my knowledge, this was once alive, alive and well at the high school. And we're just looking to bring that back. So this course, Foundations of Personal Fitness, would be an entry level course designed to introduce students to personal fitness and provide them the necessary experience and knowledge to move forward into our strength and conditioning class. It would model that of a lab class where students would be in the traditional classroom setting two, three, four days a week, and then work in the weight room, work in our back gym, utilizing equipment and working through different skill sets on those off days. Fortunately, we have a handful of text available that we can reference for our curricular needs. And we don't foresee needing any additional resources as we were able to, to use the, or purchase those rather within our budget just before school shutdown for COVID that, that same school year. But again, just really looking to build on student knowledge and foundation and, and start to kind of break the stigma of, you know, or the, break the negative stigma, I should say, around health and fitness and movement and really encompass as many student learners as we can in this course. We certainly get a particular type of student in our strength and conditioning class. And we really want to revamp that to really reflect all of our diverse learners and students. Our goal, not to get too far ahead of ourselves here, would be to propose another fitness related concept class to you all next year. Once we've got this one underway. And, and again, just really start to open up students to as many different ways that they can comfortably, comfortably move and find levels of enjoyment there. So again, you know, any questions that you have regarding the like reintroduction of this course? I'll do my very best to field. But as I mentioned a few moments ago, I wasn't here when we, when we did have this course initially. So I tried to be quick. I know time is of the essence for you all and I, and I greatly appreciate it. But certainly welcome to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Questions from the committee?
Alrighty, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And I think we have one more?
We do indeed. Thank you so much for, for staying on, everyone. And I, I want to say also, just by way of being a bridge for Brittany's two proposals. One of my new roles at the school this year is to be the department head for PE and health, as well as the performing arts, which has been an adventure, but it's really been useful, I think, with what Brittany was just saying, to make sense of how important it is to have a relationship with one's body. And I think in the pandemic, I've learned a lot from talking with Brittany and Ken about their plans for this course. And I think one of the other things that I would just kind of bring into this is the ability to reframe PE as from a top down model of like, here's the things that you need to know how to do into a, here's the stuff that you can create, which is a wonderful place to be. So to have a space where you can create work and new games and new ideas and new relationships to your body and work is in keeping with what we're doing. Both those courses also are in response in part to our block schedule. We want to create strong, potent, but compact blocks that can work for a quarter at a time, which these courses might well be. And that also is true as we move our way into the performing arts and a next door neighbor to the classes Brittany was talking about. As you may or may not know, we had a, a big change in our department last year when Tracy Vernon retired after 20 plus years as a dance teacher. And we're very fortunate to have, again, one of our own, Remy Fernandez O'Brien, an ARHS grad, and to see them take over the program as our new dance instructor. And as such, our curriculum gets an update to go along with it. So I wanted to introduce Remy and share that in the same spirit that I've come before you before with the course proposals, that this does feel part of our bigger kind of longitudinal plan of putting more project based work in students' hands and really helping them find ways to develop lifelong relationships to the arts. So Remy, with that, I'll, I'll flip it over to you.
Great. Thanks, John. And thanks to the school committee for allowing me to present here. So this is a, not so much a fully new course, as a sort of a lateral move from the introduction to dance and world of dance courses that Tracy Vernon was teaching for 22 years. So essentially, the sorry. Essentially, Tracy had this wonderful sort of three step technique of here is a survey of several styles of dance, and then let's do a deep dive into the history and the culture behind those styles of dance. And then together, we'll use sort of how we're informed by those to build our class community and to have students bring what they individually bring to the table as artists and as creators. So I'll, I'll say it's, it's, it's a small shift. And the direction we're heading is into the styles of hip hop dance, hip hop, house and locking, which are informed by Afro diasporic culture. And I'll also say that this, the, the way that I'm designing this course is heavily informed by the field of what we're calling hip hop education. Which has, as a method of teaching has existed since hip hop has existed in the 1970s and probably even before that. But it's right now exploding as a quote unquote academic field. And for me, that, that experience and the connection to that community of people who are thinking about how do we design courses from the ground up? How do we design schools from the ground up so that they reflect the ways that people who identify with hip hop culture, whether that's black and brown people or young people in general as a generation, how do we reflect the ways that they communicate? And how do we reflect the ways that they, the values of hip hop culture and also the, the cultural practices that are inherent in hip hop culture? Like, for example, the circle in which everybody sees everybody and everybody has equal opportunity to contribute. So in terms of course objectives, we're calling it intro to dance, hip hop, house and locking. So we're going to study the history and the core techniques of those three styles of dance, which are social dances. And then we'll study the culture of those dance forms with a focus on social justice and community through the arts. And we'll use the open accessible nature of these dance forms, the way that anybody can step into it to explore how dance is open to all bodies and how the myth of talent should not limit anyone from enjoying dance. And then finally, developing an inclusive and accepting class community inspired by those practices of hip hop and house culture. So I was, as, as John Beckton mentioned, I was a student of Tracy Vernon's when I was in high school. And that's where I fell in love with dance. And so there's, there's really a desire to preserve a lot of the things that made that a beautiful space. And then in, in terms of Tracy Vernon would, would bring all of this knowledge to the table, artistic knowledge, cultural knowledge, and just create this wonderful buffet and then invite all of us to contribute what we contribute to the table. So that spirit is, is still very much there. And it's just making a little bit more explicit that we're celebrating the culture that makes sense to students and the the, the things that make sense to them. I would, I'll also say it's, it's, I think it's valuable, just like the Conjunto de Bomba, which has existed at ARHS for many years. It's a home for black culture, for Afro diasporic culture, for Latinx culture, and explicitly celebrates that and invites students in who identify with that culture. And says, this is a, this is a space for you where you, your culture is recognized, but also inviting everybody else in at the same time. And the, I will also say that it having a, a course like this also, I think, shows that dance is for everyone, which is a really exciting idea to me. Which is, you know, I, I've taught dance in a lot of places. And there's always this conversation about people saying, you know, I say, you know, come take my dance class. And people will say, oh, I'm not a dancer. And there's all this like wholly loaded connotation around what the word dancer is in quotes. And to so many people, somebody who is a dancer is somebody who can, who's taken a dance class, who's taken a who, you know, has learned certain specific techniques and really wanting to open that up as wide as possible and invite people, these are conversations that we're having in my classes right now this fall. Invite people who dance in their living room, who dance with their friends on the sidewalk, who communicate and dance socially and really have all these types of knowledge that we, I think it's, it's really valuable to recognize and to invite people in and say, this is a space for you as well. And I'll just finish by highlighting a few of the ways that that's taking place this fall already. We brought students to a dance battle and had them at the five colleges and have them actually able to see how the culture of hip hop is alive today and how people are communicating through dance. We've also brought in world class Chicago footworking artists, again, in collaboration with the five college dance department to have from seventh grade through 12th grade, be able to connect with these people who are in the process right now of creating a new style of hip hop dance and are some of the best in the world at it and see like how that process happens. And it's also just really fun to play hip hop music in the studio and have students walk by and go, wait a second. What's happening in here? Okay, I have to be a part of this. So that's, that's a really exciting conversation that we're having also. So I think that's it. I look forward to your questions and thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Dunming?
Um, again, what, this is just so, I wish we could have every meeting and talk about these courses. Like, what a beautiful thing. I just, I love the description you have here on the rationale. To, that it emphasizes social dance that can be explored and playful, low stakes ways with others that makes our intro course a more authentic invitation into an art form that many can feel shy about exploring. And at the risk of a really bad pun, you know, I'm thinking back to the, the fiber arts course. And I'm, I'm seeing this common thread between that and the PE course and, and the, and the literature course of taking things that we, we've always taught and that we've always taught in a very open, you know, progressive way in Amherst and making it even more accessible to students and inviting them in in a way where they said, you know, I might not have done engineering before. And, you know, we had that example that, that student hadn't made anything with their hands before. Now they're now studying architecture. Or, or getting kids involved in, in other things. And I just, I just really appreciate the, the, the proactive effort that you've made to to expand on this. And it's, I think it's very important for school committee to, to understand this theme, because a lot of the courses we're talking tonight are electives. And so we don't, they're not enrollment numbers of, you know, dozens or hundreds for, for some of these. And so when push comes to shove and we have to advocate publicly for the budget that we're going to have, you know, one of the common questions is, oh, well, this course only has a handful of kids. Why is that important? And for me, it's important because this is mainline of what our district values. It's about meeting students where they are. It's, this is like baked right into our mission statement, right? It's, it's meeting students where they are and contouring our offerings to, to those students. And so, you know, it might not be a thousand students that are taking this dance course. But, but this might be the most important course that a handful of students take. And if that has that impact, then, then we're doing our job as a district. We couldn't do it without these great ideas. So, so thank you very much for being this.
Lost my cursor, sorry. Mr. Stamo?
Yeah, as, as a levered representative, this is my first close encounter with high school teachers in Amherst. And I can just say that I, you know, just the intelligence, the creativity, the passion, the eloquence. I, I'm just so impressed. And I really, you know, have some understanding of, of, of why the high school is just, you know, so well thought of across the state. So I, I thank everyone for their incredible commitment and keep it up. It's wonderful.
Any other comments?
Okay. Questions?
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry, we have one more presentation, so I'm just gonna go ahead and have at it. I'm Krista Larson. I'm the Science Department Chair, and I have two things to talk to you about tonight. One of them is our course sequencing and the offerings, the order in which we offer classes in the Science Department. And the other is a new chemistry class we're hoping to offer for students. So I'm going to give a presentation about this. Just one second. And okay, it's telling me, told me it didn't like that. One second, let's try this. Okay, there we go. So we are, currently, we offer courses in this sequence. We have a course for ninth grade, we have courses for 10th grade, courses for 11th grade, and some that are set aside for our 12th grade students. One of the common themes you've heard tonight is that the change to the block schedule has changed what opportunities are available for students. Like engineering, we're also finding in science that we have a growing need for offering advanced-level courses for students who are interested in more science. The pandemic has really sparked students' interest in the sciences as well. So we're hoping to move away from this structure that also has some limiting factors in it as well, including the placement of AP Biology and the requirement of two prerequisites for that AP Biology class, one being honors chemistry and the other being a quarter course called Genetics and Evolution. So we are seeing some troubles with that current sequence that was designed for a seven-drop-one schedule now that we're running our courses in this block schedule. All the words on these slides kind of tell you that in a variety of different ways. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move past that into one other sticking point for us, which is that the MCAS is, is working to remove the chemistry option for the MCAS. Right now, they offer biology, engineering, and a chemistry and a physics option. Chemistry is one of the courses that we teach to 10th graders, and so when they take MCAS, they have that option of taking their MCAS in chemistry. But if that is going to be going away, then we need to be thinking about changing the way that we're offering courses so that our sophomores are prepared to pass that test, not just pass it, but really do well on it so that they have opportunities for scholarships and other things that come along with that. So our new idea involves removing obstacles of prerequisites for lots of our courses, creating cohesion for ninth and 10th grade offerings, and trying to enhance the elective availability for juniors and seniors since we now have more courses that students, we have more course slots and more elective opportunities for students in our current schedule. So our new course sequence, we are hoping would look something like this. We would still retain our ninth grade offerings. We would then have all 10th graders taking a biology course, which would then prepare them for that MCAS test in that year. Then for 11th and 12th grade, we would open the door on all of the courses that we offer. Students could then choose to take chemistry and physics as juniors and seniors as they usually do, or they could choose to take some of our science elective offerings like anatomy and physiology or environmental science or environmental studies as well. Additionally, we're hoping to offer a new course called Advanced Chemistry as an honors class, and I'll talk about that one in a minute, too. So if we are able to move to this new sequencing, we would offer, have an enhanced offering of courses for 11th and 12th graders. Students could better choose courses that are more interesting to them based on their interests or math abilities. We are removing prerequisites from AP Biology, which would hopefully increase enrollment in that course, particularly for students who might find it daunting to have to lock into a sequence of courses to get the prerequisites done in order to take it, which is what we're currently seeing. Also, creating a new elective chemistry course would give students some more exposure to that knowledge as well. This shows that we have thought carefully about how we can move AP Biology from a junior course with lots of prerequisites to a sophomore-level class. I don't think you need the details on that, but they do exist. Our Advanced Chemistry class, I'll talk about now. It would be a course that would be open to 11th and 12th grade students who've completed chemistry or chemistry honors. We don't want to limit who is able to join this class. We want anybody interested in more chemistry to have that opportunity. It would cover new content that extends what's covered in chemistry and chemistry honors. These are topics including equilibrium and thermodynamics, organic chemistry, electrochemistry, and other topics that are very interesting to students that simply don't fit into the sequence and timing that we have available for chemistry and honors chemistry right now. It moves our chemistry courses into alignment with what we are able to offer for electives for biology, physics, and environmental science, all of which we can provide some more depth of courses in. But chemistry right now only has one semester course. And I have a full description of that course available as well. If anybody needs more information, I can send that along also. And that, I'll stop my presentation. And if anyone has questions, I'm happy to take those.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Stanser?
Just a comment. I really like the idea of making the AP Biology accessible to more students by not having to have those required courses and that decision made so early on in their high school career.
Yeah, we agree. We're seeing that the students are limited in who feels like they can sign up for it because if they, if they do, they're locked in really early, and if they decide later that that wasn't the right choice for them, it's really hard to kind of find your place after that. So this should remove those burdens.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. And with that, is that all of the presentations? I think so, okay. So now, I don't know if there's any sort of closing comments that Mr. Siddique or Dr. Morris or anybody wants to make before we move into general discussion in both. Dr. Morris?
I'll defer to Principal Siddique, and then I can jump in.
I'd just like to say, you know, these are some of the teachers I have the honor of working with every day, and I commend them for all the hard work, not only on these courses, but on the work they do every day. Shining example of why I think our students are doing so well and why we have such an amazing high school. Glad that you all got to give a sampling of that tonight.
So I fully endorse and agree with what Principal Siddique said. I also, this is such a positive presentation, and I don't want to be the negative Nellie, but I'm gonna be, which is just to say that these things only happen because, and if we have a budget that supports our schools to be able to offer the rich curriculum that we have. So when we're in four-town meeting in three weeks or whatever it is, and people continue to say, oh, no, we can't do this, we can't do that. I think, you know, I just encourage the regional school committee, and I'll do my part as well to bring the creativity, ingenuity. And to Mr. Demling's point, for the finance committees of those member towns, the reality that we are in a competitive marketplace and any prospective parent watching these presentations tonight, separate from the individual courses themselves, which are exciting, but seeing the individuals who are developing those courses and the talents of our educators, it's dependent on the towns coming to an agreement on, you know, yes, the assessment method, and yes, the overall budget, so that we can actually provide these experiences, these rich learning experiences that broaden our students' perspective to all the students in our school. So I think, I hate to use, to go to that place, but I don't want to pretend that these courses can exist sans a budget that supports our students and our staff members to do the work that we feel like is so critical. So I will swerve back to the positive and just thank and appreciate the educators on this call who have a tremendous amount of things to do in the next day and a half, and then hopefully deserve, get a well, incredibly well-deserved break before coming back in January. But I really want to thank them for the thoughtfulness of their presentations, both the written presentation that was posted in advance, but also the oral presentation tonight. But I couldn't let the presentation go without recognizing this as an opportunity, perhaps for the four-member towns to bring the video recording of this and to those towns and talk about, here's why we have a budget, right? It's not just to fulfill some core requirement. Sure, we do that, but it's actually to support the ingenuity and experience of our students. That is why we're all here. So I'll stop on that. I could ride that horse long. We've got a long night of other agenda items ahead of us, so I'll leave it there, but I couldn't let it go without mentioning that.
Thank you. And I would second or third or whatever, whatever that is, because I think, and I would let some of the slides that were, that you all showed to us tonight were not in our packet, and I would love to have those, I think, in ways. So when we get to that point that we can sort of use some of them, because I think it really brings to life the description, you know, we, the big course description that's on the website is fabulous when you're trying to help your kids sign up for classes, and yet it doesn't bring it to life in the same way that you all did tonight. So if we could have some of those slides, I think, will really help us in sort of building that story when we get to the, to, as Dr. Morris said, the four towns meeting. And I think, you know, one of the things that sticks in my head, too, is in our various budget forums that we've had over the last couple of weeks, we keep restating our mission. And, you know, one of the things in, that we talk about is that every learner and every student, that we support every student, no matter where they're at. And what is phenomenal about this variety of course offerings is not just that there's a lot of a variety of course offerings, but it enables us to really achieve our mission for whatever student, whatever their passion is. And you all know this better than any of us on school committee, that to engage a student in their learning, you have to connect with their interests and their passions. And there isn't just one, I mean, when I was in high school, there was only one pathway through high school. There was only one set of courses that we could take, and we couldn't sort of follow our passions and engage in learning in that way. And I think really, to uphold our mission as a district, we need to be offering this variety so that we can connect and engage with every single one of our learners, whatever their passions are and wherever they're at in their, in their trajectory. So the more that material you all can give us, like these slides, to help us in building that story and building that case to get the budget, to secure the budget that we need to provide this and continue to grow that and innovate like this would be really helpful. So I think, looking around to see who has cameras, okay. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the courses as presented this evening. Lord, second. And moved by McDonald, seconded by Lord. Any discussion? Mr. Stamo?
Yeah, it's just a, for my own edification, I mean, I love the presentations. Why, as a school committee, do we have to approve the courses? I'm not clear about that. Is it just because of the budget? Or, I mean, we don't have a figure, a dollars figure to go along with the courses. So why is that our business? Why isn't it the high school superintendent's business to okay courses?
Is it my understanding, and I'll look to Dr. Morris to correct me if I say this wrong, but it's a two-prong approval process. So you're absolutely correct. The high school administration would, will, needs to approve the courses that it, that they want to as a group propose to move forward. And because it likely has a budget impact, that's why then the school committee then also weighs in on it, pending the budget impact. So as we start to build our budgets going into, for the next school year, it will be informed by the possibility of offering these new courses.
Yep, it's also just a place that, because the high school, the history of it is because the high school is a place where courses get into more controversial topics, and the school committee has a policy on controversial topics, that there is a special place for the school committee. So even if there was no budget implications, where sometimes there is, as you heard tonight, sometimes there's not because these are reorganizations of courses. Our practice in this district has to bring high school new courses. I think it has a dual benefit, as many of you have noted, is sharing with the community the wonderful talents we have and offerings we were able to off, we're able to share with our high school students. But it is one way that school committee does get involved and approves new courses specifically at the high school. And this is a higher number of new courses than has been typically, usually we're at like three. I'm looking at Mr. Siddique here. It's like, that's, if I did the mean of my six years in this role, I think that'd be the mean three, maybe four. So we're at a high end this year. As you heard, some of that is connected to the block and the change of schedule. Some of that's not, right? Just folks who come in with new ideas that are doing really innovative work, that are pushing our boundaries, and we're so glad they are. But because of all of those factors, the school committee does weigh in on that, and you're right to note, it is different. The middle school has new courses, sometimes, sometimes the budget implications, all that's kind of management, you know, kind of administratively driven. But this one, historically, in this particular district anyway, has been supported with school committee consideration and vote. But great question. I should have started with that when I did the intro. Thank you for asking.
Mr. Demling?
So I'll try not to belabor the budget point that Dr. Morris and Ms. McDonald made, I think, well. But this, you know, this is the easy part, right? We had this awesome presentation. We voted to approve these courses. But then, you know, the work ahead, I think, for the superintendent, for the school committee, is advocating for the budget to support this and to promote and market it, you know, which we shouldn't be shy about saying in a, in a, in a real sustained concerted effort, I think. And I think in a newly investing in a way, and again, this impacts the budget in a meta way, not just to fund these courses, but to fund a way to promote these courses in a way that we haven't before. And, you know, I think that's really a responsibility of the school committee and the district. We need to, you know, figure out how to do that, that engages the community and our towns so that it's front and center on our budget discussions. Because like Ms. McDonald said, there are many school districts, even in Massachusetts today, where that high school path is very fixed and very few options and with larger class sizes and even in the standard classes. And that's not uncommon in our state. And so, you know, while we have this now, while the investment is there, you know, it's, the duty is on us to communicate that, to promote it, to have a key word.
With that, we'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stamo?
Stamo, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
And I see we have some new folks joining us for our next item on our agenda, which is the Human Resources Update. And with that, there is a presentation attached to this agenda item. And I'll turn that over to to Ms. Cunningham. Welcome.
I think you're muted during.
So thank you for having us. Each year, the Human Resource Department does a presentation to just talk about our progress on the goals that we have in the school district or that the school committee has set forth. I know one of the goals We have in the school district or that the school committee has set forth. I know one of the goals. Is that we increase the diversity of our staff. Until it reaches the diversity of our students. We also have a goal.
Hiring, retention and promotion of our staff. Doreen will be covering an Evening with ARPS, which was our special guest speaker series that we had recently. And then Carol will wrap us up with presentations and our curriculum day, and then we'll have questions at the end. So as Doreen just mentioned, the School Equity Task Force set before us the two goals that you see here, which was to increase the percentage of staff of color. In each category in our districts until it reflects that of our students, the demographic of our students, and to also broaden and deepen. The learning of all of our staff about race and racism with an emphasis on systemic racism and unconscious bias. So our first data point that we're going to look here, look at here today. Is how we've been able to increase the number of staff of color in our district. So the. Column that is highlighted in green, which reflects the 2018, 2019 school year. Is when we first implemented our hiring practice, our new hiring practice and our training. Which is to really limit and try our best to eliminate eliminate. Unconscious bias in the hiring process. And it's important to note. That any staff member, any person who wants to participate in any one of our hiring or screening committees. Has to go through this training beforehand. And as you can see, we've been able to steadily increase. The number of staff of color in our district since then. Through the 21 school year. And here we have a quick comparison and I'll switch screens so that you can see in the comparison is. Our staff diversity in our district in comparison to the state of Massachusetts, the other districts. So I'm just going to switch here quickly because it is on another tab. And if you can see, the first. Row in yellow is the number of staff members who identify as white in school districts in Massachusetts. Versus ARPS versus our district. And then, and this is between 2016 and 2020. And the green row here is reflective of ARPS staff of color growing, the numbers growing from 2016 to 2020. In comparison to the state, which is the purple row at the end. So as you can see, just from this quick. From this chart that we have here, the work that's been going on in the district, our trainings, our presentations. We've been able to increase the number of staff of color who identify as staff of color. In our district. And it's, I think it's pretty neat to have a comparison of how we're doing. And as opposed to to other districts in the state. So we just wanted to share that with you and I'll go back to our slides. So as we move forward, we also wanted to talk about retention, right? Because it's not just, a big part of it is hiring staff of color, but what are we doing? How are we? Doing when it comes to retaining those staff members? Are we able to keep them in our district or are we having a high turnover rate? And here, again, highlighted in green is the year when we first implemented our hiring practice. And then moving forward, this is, these are the percentages of. Staff of color whom we've been able to retain. And as you can see. We've been increasing as well, steadily increasing in retaining our staff. Of color. And I think it's important for us to have this data point also, so that we can monitor how we're doing with keeping our staff. And we'll go into a little bit here as to how we're doing that, right? What's the point? How are we going to tackle the retention of staff? And what we wanted to focus on was building capacity and improving relationships. And one of the ways in which we've been able to do that is mentoring. So when we look at new teachers or new staff who especially new teachers who come. To work in our district, we have to pair them up with a mentor teacher. Who has the same license as the new teacher, right, per DUCI requirements, but it's not just. Do they have the same licensure? We're looking at. Can we pair them up or can we pair them with a mentor who has a similar background? Do they have a similar culture, right? Do they come from similar cultural backgrounds? Because establishing those relationships is really important in being able to build a connection. For that, so people can have a sense of community in our district and feel more comfortable and feel safer in our community, safer in our district. And thus be able to stay. And then we follow that up too with a second year teacher workshop. So. We found that it's really important for our teachers to move along with that same cohort of new teachers that they started with. And they meet on a monthly basis and they do a lot of PD work together. They do a lot of work around social justice in the classroom. And it's very important for them to continue to build that community, continue to build those connections. And have those relationships with the cohort that they started with and know that they're not alone in their in their trajectory here at ARPS. And then we have our affinity groups. We have Alana. We also have affinity groups centered around men of color who work in the district. And coming off of a year where everyone was remote and now everyone is is returning to the buildings. It can be very unsettling for our staff. And so having those affinity groups to connect people back. Together and to continue to build that sense of community and those relationships. We have found have proved to be very fruitful when it comes to retaining our staff. Another. One another bullet point here is to explore other pathways. So are we retaining staff also by providing them with pathways? For advancement in our district. Some people, they enter as a para educator, they may enter as an interpreter in our district. But they're, they want to achieve more, right? They want, they want to move further along in their career in education. So what we have done is we've been able to put in place one of the programs that we're really proud of, which is called the Futures Program, and it's. Specifically for paraeducators of color who are interested in becoming educators, who are interested in becoming teachers. And it is a program where we partner with Mount Holyoke College and they can receive a master's in teaching and then graduate as licensed educators. We're working to, we've worked closely with teachers who are interested in becoming administrators. And we've worked with them on how to achieve licensure for that and pairing them also with mentors so that they can complete the work that is necessary and required for an administrator license. And currently, we also have a specialized certification program that is open to all staff, completely free of cost. And it covers all the competencies that are required for SE certification. And so we're opening ways and we're opening pathways for staff in our district to also know that there are ways for them to advance, to continue in. Their in their path towards education, towards working with students. And so we we pride ourselves on that, on being able to lend that helping hand so that they don't feel as if they're alone. And they're doing this completely on their own. Here, we just wanted to highlight our promotions. Just this, these numbers are from this current school year alone. Of staff members who've been promoted from either teacher to administrator, para educator to teacher. Here we have the number of our futures graduates from last year who are currently working as teachers, licensed teachers in our district. And then we're also, we're not only looking at people in the classroom, but we're looking at our custodians as well. And we're looking. At our different groups of people that work in our schools and how they may want to advance. In their own, in their own field. And I'll leave it to Doreen.
Thank you. Jen, can you go back to that last slide? So Ms. Ortiz talked about the custodians. And them moving forward too, as we work to advance and help all in our district to move towards whatever their goals may be. But we want to share one story that there was an interpreter. Who had decided that he wanted to do something more. And so he came and he started working with us as a para educator. And then he advanced, he went through the Futures Program and became a teacher. And then now he's currently an assistant principal in our district. And he's looking to continue that advancement and continue to do the work in our schools. And he has written letters just to talk about. How. Excited he was to embark on that journey and how the Human Resources Department helped him. To achieve the goals that he had in place, just by having a conversation with him to find out what his goals are. And this is something that we do for everyone. We offer an opportunity for people to just sit with us and talk to us about the goals that they have. So that we can see how they can get to where they want to be. You know, I always say we have this bus. And we want to make sure that people are in the right seat on the right bus, right? And so that's how we help them as a department. The other thing that Jen mentioned was how we are looking to retain individuals and promote them. But I want to just point out that retention is not just the Human Resources Department's job. Retention is the job of everyone, right, including the community. Because if a person is not feeling like they are welcomed or connected, they are not going to stay. So I would look for everyone in the district, whether you're a food service worker, custodian, teacher, whatever role you play. As long as you're touching the life of a colleague or a student or anyone, a family, that is your job to help to. Provide that connection, help to build that collegial relationship and help build a culture where people would really want to stay. Thank you, Jenny. So one of the things that we decided to. Implement this year, just taking some feedback, not from last year, because last year, due to COVID, we were not able to. Do our annual presentation. But the previous year, one of the suggestions was to include the community as much as possible. And to let them know some of the things that we're doing. And so to that end. We offered what's called the Evening with ARPS. And our first session started with Dr. Cornell West. And he had an opportunity to sit with Dr. Morris and have a conversation. The community was centered link so that families and other community members can watch it. And then after that, the following week, we had Dr. Joseph Matthews, whose philosophy on teaching was remarkable to hear, you know, and he talked about his, his journey. Things he wished teachers knew when he was in their classrooms. And then we closed it off with Rhonda Soto this year. She had a phenomenal conversation with Jen. And just talked about her life and and just many things regarding social justice. So the next slide. We always ask. And sometimes even when not asked, people were willing to give their opinions on how things were going. And so these are some of the comments that we received and, you know, it was all very positive. People were excited to hear all three speakers. So I put at the time, but there was a total of over 500 views for the series. And just to get that many people to be able to watch something late at night and go back to it, you know, it's it's a. Just a testament to how important. People understand that the social justice work that we're doing in our district is, right? And the fact that Dr. West came out in the evening to just share his time with Amherst was also a remarkable feat. So, you know, we watched and we we came back and watched again. So like I said, at the time that I that we created this slide, it was over 500 views for the series. And so with the popularity that we've seen, this was a fall series and we're looking to possibly do a spring series as well.
Good night, everyone. My name is Carol Lee Monroe and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Diversity, Equity and Human Resources. Now, the information provided in my part of the presentation is in keeping with the second HR goal of the School's Equity Task Force. The district's PD started in 2018. On Election Day in November of each year, all categories of staff participate in a half day of professional development. With emphasis on race and understanding how systemic racism and unconscious bias affects our environment. And how we as a district can support our colleagues or students, families and the wider community. The morning starts off with a keynote speaker and a question and answer session, followed by various presentations. Where staff are given an opportunity to work in groups. Listed here are just a few of the offerings that were made available to staff in November. One such presentation is the Power to Interrupt, which was aimed at helping staff. To understand how important it is to create and maintain safe spaces for coworkers and students. The presentation provided examples of biased based incidences that have taken place across the nation. Which resulted in some persons being harmed and in many instances killed. Staff were able to identify some of the reasons they don't interrupt these difficult situations, the main being fear. Other reasons included the inability to analyze a situation, being naturally non-confrontational, having the feeling of being powerless. Some persons thought that interrupting these situations was just absolutely none of their business. While others were waiting and watching with the hope and belief that someone else will help. Some also mentioned that they did not think that they have the strategy to assist. Staff got firsthand training with scenarios that occurred in our schools that were harmful and bias based. They were able to think and discuss some of the actions that would they would have taken had they come across similar situations. A main concern that staff had was the issue of power dynamics. For example. If a power sees an administrator being disrespectful to another peril, the fear of retribution would cause them not to act. All agreed that all staff, regardless of category, should feel empowered to interrupt such situations. The overall goal was to help staff to recognize that they have not just the power, but the resources needed. To deal with and to assist and to interrupt these difficult situations. It was felt that when staff and students know that someone else will act on their behalf, it helps them to feel safer. Than alone. Thank you so much. Doreen?
So before we get to the questions, I just want to say that, you know, Carol just talked about some of the PDs that we offer. And that half day PD day. But it's also important to know that even though that part, this session is half day for all staff. That they do return to their buildings and continue with the learning. And also throughout the school year, staff are always looking for ways to advance and increase their learning about bias and social justice. We know that. Each individual internalizes their learning at different paces. They also reflect on the things that they're doing that may cause harm at different paces. So we still get complaints. We still have investigations that we have to do in HR. Because it's just, you know, something that happens when we're dealing with humans, right? I know that at times people say, well, they get frustrated and they say, well, you know, none of this training, none of these things are working. People are still doing harm. And yes, people are, but like I said. People internalize and change at different paces. So they may not change as quickly as you want them to change. They may definitely may not change as quickly as. After they watch a presentation, but at some point over time, they may change. So with that being said, as I mentioned, this year, we added the Evening with Series. And we've also added an opportunity for staff when they have an issue with another staff member. To have the adult restorative process take place. So those are two additions that we have this year, and we also have added something called the Community of Care. We're coming into into a year where people are struggling, right? They've been locked down for quite a while. They've had loss, they've had trauma, they've had so many things happen and they are struggling. And so we're working, you know, building by building, groups by groups to anyone who wishes to share. To help them to come up with ideas, to form community, to build a camaraderie. And to help each other to get through this year and through whatever situation they're going through. And that's through the Community of Care. And with that, I will say thank you for having us. And now we can open to questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Mr. Demling?
Thank you very much for this presentation. It was excellent. So just one quick comment on the retention rate. For the future, it might be helpful to show in context what the retention rate is for all staff. So that if there's like major variables like, you know, economics that are going to. Cause a big spike for staff in general to go up or down, you could more easily see. That and then, you know, what what the difference is there for for staff of color. Just, you know, small, small observation. So I really like the the way that. Over the years, we've, HR has has added on additional layers of support for staff of color, all throughout the the. The pipeline from from hire to to throughout the the staff career in terms of the the anti-bias training and the Alana cabinet and and other sports. So I know that we we probably do do exit interviews and we have a hiring interview. Have we ever thought of the concept of this idea of state interviews where. You know, periodically, whether it's every six months or every year. You proactively reach out to staff and say. you know, how's it going, uh, you know, we, our goal is to create a supportive, inclusive environment for you, you know, what's working well, what's, what's not working well? Just a concept I've heard of recently in some other DEI efforts, and wondering if we've, if we've thought of that again.
I can speak to that and say, I think our HR department communicates frequently with our staff members. We have quite an open door policy in terms of, as much as we can during this COVID season. But we encourage our staff members to reach out to us and to talk to us about whether it's their own career, you know, what they want to do with them, with, with their careers, if they're having challenges, how we can connect them with other staff members, licensure, you know, whatever, whatever it may be. Sometimes staff just come to our office and they sit and they talk and they unload, and then they go back to the classroom and they're ready to be with kids again. So, uh, you know, we're always open to suggestions as to how we can do better and, 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 and supporting our staff, absolutely, but I, I think that we, we keep a pretty open communication with our, with our staff members, and they feel comfortable being able to come and, and talk to us.
Thank you for that, Ms. Ortiz, and I would just add that, as Jen said, there are many people who just come in because they want to talk. And if we call them in, there's already this fear like, oh, HR is calling us. Even just walking into a building, they're like, HR is here. And they don't want to be the one seen with HR. So we allow them the opportunity to just reach out, we'll send an email out saying, you know, if you'd like to talk, we're here. And there are people who do come in and talk with us. So in a sense, we don't call it a stay interview, but we do have those opportunities offered to our members.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, and if I could just, absolutely, and I see that, um, you know, if theirs was a deli, the number would be pretty high, every day of people who come in just to chat. Sorry, some New York humor for you, but, um, the, um, I think on a more serious note, the other thing that Ms. Cunningham and I participate, and, and Mr. Gordon, who's not able to be here, is we have the Alana Cabinet, and that is a group of staff members who do come in, and retention is a topic that is front and center and has been on that group of staff members. So they also, part of being on the Alana Cabinet is they're collecting information from staff members or colleagues in their buildings, and bringing it to Ms. Cunningham, myself, for discussion. So it, it is a less formal structure than I think what was, you know, the question asked for, but I think it, it serves the same purpose, and it's positioning our Alana staff members as a leadership role in the school, and being able to collect that information and bring it directly, for us, has a really nice feeling that we, we want staff feeling, uh, staff of color feeling empowered. And I think there also, uh, those who have agreed to join the group have come up with many ideas over the last couple of years since we've been doing it on how to increase retention. So it, it is a useful two-way mechanism to hear directly from staff members in similar ways to what happens, perhaps less formally, with the kind of routine check-ins that folks who just swing into HR do. So I think, I think there's multiple layers of how we get that feedback as well.
Ms. Spitzer?
Um, well, I just wanted to use this opportunity to express my gratitude and appreciation for the work that all of you have presented this evening. I think it's really important that our, our district is committed to, you know, having a staff who, who reflects the diversity in our community. And so, um, you know, tonight's my last day on school committee, so in particular to Ms. Cunningham, I, I, I just wanted to express all my gratitude for the hard work you've done over the years I've been on the committee, because I think, um, you know, your efforts have really benefited everybody in the schools, from the kids through the staff, and, and also all of us as the committee members, you've put in a lot, a lot of hours here too. And I also just wanted to share that, you know, I, I have kids in preschool and private schools in the community, and they were sharing out information about the events, you know, with Dr. Cornell West and Dr. Jay. So I know that it's not just the members of our, you know, ARPS community, but it's, it's the broader Amherst community too that's benefiting from, from that work. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Spitzer, and you are, you were always appreciated while you, and hopefully everything will go well with you where you're going.
Other questions? I think this is a, um, I said this about, about the, the new courses, but I think, you know, your presentation, your team's presentation each year is also another, another one of the highlights, because it's, it's an area that we don't always hear about, and we can't see, because our, our, our kids in the district don't know what's happening in the HR office, nor should they. And so it's, it's, um, it, it's always amazing to hear sort of the hard work and sort of the things that, that you're doing and trying, and, and sort of how you're expanding that work and, and innovating, and, and the impact that it's having, and seeing that in the data is, is so, so helpful. And this is another example of things that we'll want to make sure that we're pulling into when we get into the budget development and get into our four towns meeting. It's really emphasizing the important work that you all are doing to improve retention and build community and, and support our staff. Just, you know, their, their wellbeing during such difficult time, but also their, their growth and development as, as professionals. So, um, I look forward to integrating all of that into our upcoming, upcoming work there. Other questions or comments? Dr. Morris?
There's not others, I'll, I'll let folks get on, well, Doreen can't go too far tonight, but, um, uh, the, uh, others get on their way. I just want to appreciate, and, and, and I think I can say this confidently from the superintendent lens, I'm not sure how visible it is to the community or for the school committee, how unique it is that we have a, a department that has such a multifaceted role. Right? So human resources, or some places call it human capital now, and, and, you know, in many places aren't connecting the dots between the people we bring in, the support they need to be successful and retention, and also the professional development for, for staff, but also the larger community on critical issues of diversity and equity. It's a really unique, uh, skill set and group of individuals that can pull in a department and expand the scope of the department to probably well beyond what it's typically thought of in public schools. And when I talk to my colleagues in Western Massachusetts on our regular conference calls, they're not having these outcomes, it's, it's much more splintered and less coherent for staff, and, and doesn't have the same outcomes that, that the work that this department does. So I really want to thank Carol, Jennifer, and Doreen, as well as Damani, who wasn't able to be here tonight. And, and it's too bad, because Damani does an incredible amount of work that, that is unique, uh, and, and probably hard to put on a slide, and without him presenting it, it just, you know, we, we miss having, I miss having Damani, I think we miss having Damani here tonight. But it, this isn't normal, right? So like, I, I think I just want to be really clear about the critical work the department does, uh, and how it spans really across the district, across our organization, has made our organization much better since, since, you know, the reorganization happened, and particularly the individuals who walked into the roles, took the roles, and expanded it well beyond what was, uh, happening before, but also well what, beyond what's typically happening in most districts. So I think unfortunately, uh, this excellent presentation or some version of it has happened for a couple of years, and, uh, I worry that it gets routine, uh, for individuals watching, I don't mean the committee, but I, I just want to reinforce that this is not routine, this is not happening in other districts, they're not getting this presentation, this data presented, and particularly the, the delta and the data from five years ago to now. It's not normal, and that's why that slide that showed the state average basically not moving on diversity of staff, and our district one moving pretty quickly, that's why it all happened. So I just want to share my appreciation and just recognize the uniqueness of, of the department and the individuals within the department, and, and how much they contribute to the fabric of the organization. It's not, you know, HR can often be this thing that just gets de-emphasized in organizations. It's like, yeah, they, they, you know, push papers or whatever, that may not be true, but that's the reputation HR departments sometimes have in organizations, and I don't think anyone has, I know no one has that, uh, in our organization, because they really are critical to everything we do in our, in our district. So I just want to share that appreciation, but I, I, I worry that things, because they do such a good job for a couple of years now that it gets routine, and people may lose sight of the uniqueness of the, the, and the impact of the department, the individuals. So thank you all for doing that, and thank you for allowing me to, I think, an important monologue there, but I think, uh, I, I think it's just important to note that sometimes excellence, when it becomes routine, just gets routinized, and that's not, I don't want to see that happen.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, scanning the, the screen. Great, and, um, then I, uh, thank you again for, for that discussion and presentation. Always, always a highlight of the year. So we're, we're pushing up against our two and a half hour, uh, time. So I want to propose some agenda adjustments, and, uh, with folks, just, uh, I'll look to the committee to, to agree or, or question these, but so, the, we have the ESR Fund Spending Update, Land Acknowledgement Presentation Policy Review, and, uh, School Equity Advisory Committee Update. And I'm going to propose that we move items C, E, and F to our January meeting. So that would be the ESR Fund Spending Update, the Policy Review, and the School Equity Advisory Committee Update to our January meeting, and keep our land acknowledgement presentation. And we've already pushed that from earlier this month to now, plus, Ms. Lord is spearheading that and would love to have her be able to do that before she moves off of the committee. So with folks' permission, are you, are, are folks okay with those agenda adjustments? Seeing a lot of thumbs up and head nodding. Okay, great. So we'll make note of that in our agenda planning document, and we will now move on to our next item, which would be the Land Acknowledgement Presentation. And, um, with that, I will turn that over to Ms. Lord.
Thank you. I also want to, um, mention Margaret Stanser, who has walked on this walk with me. She volunteered to help out and sends resources, and so thank you, um, Miss, Mrs. Stanser. When this first came up a while ago, I brought it up about honoring, um, our history. A lot of this country has erased, sanitized, and lied about histories, because what happened to the Indigenous people is a pretty horrific history to hold. But there's still harm today. So I want to mention there is danger in a gesture, and to only do a land acknowledgement and stop there and say, yay, we did it, is a gesture, and there, that is dangerous. And I liken it to another thing that happens often, and I'm not, I'm saying this to be informative, not critical, but just to put a Black Lives Matter lawn sign on your front lawn, it is great, it's visibility, but if you stop there, there's harm in that gesture. If we're not continually working to deconstruct racist policies and practices. So with this land acknowledgement, because you'll find a lot of people say, please don't do that, because it's just harming our community. If we only do the land acknowledgement and don't follow it up with substantive actions that, um, enhance and work with the Indigenous community here and across the country, where we will be doing harm. So I just wanted to put that out there. There was, um, a packet, a little bit, I noticed an error, we need an editor, with, um, SMART goals, specific, measurable, actionable, and realistic, and time-bound. They're just guidelines, suggestions. I'm happy to continue to advise or work on this post my tenure on the school committee. And, um, where we would begin is to write an acknowledgement of the Indigenous people who inhabited this land before policies, doctrines of discoveries, and the driving out of that community. Are there any questions? Comments, concerns?
Questions? One, um, question that, that I had, um, is when we've talked about this, I think in the past, and I know we're not, we're, we're tabling the, um, School Equity Advisory Committee, but I'm wondering if there's, if there was, if, um, in your current prior role as Chair of that group, if there's been sort of interest or passion among that group to sort of work on this, um, if there's, if that's a subgroup of, of that, or if this is something separate. How do you perceive that?
I would love any feedback from Mr. Harrington as well, as part of that group, but I think that definitely fits in, in my opinion, as to what a School Equity Advisory Council or committee could work on. Especially putting into the different actions about like looking at the curriculum, and how are the books and the library representing Indigenous people and certain different actions. Mr. Harrington? I mean, oh, I'm not the chair, sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Harrington, if you want to add anything.
Oh, yeah, I absolutely concur, like, this is, this is right in the, the wheelhouse of the work that, that we would be doing in the School Equity Advisory Committee, I have to get used to saying that. But yeah, yeah, and, and I, I think there's some folks that have been involved right through that would be helpful in this pursuit as well.
Did I see Mr. Demong's hand up? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, again, I want to thank Ms. Lord for bringing this forward. You know, this is a really intense topic. And, um, you know, I, I, I tried to do some, some reading and educating on the topic, and I, I really want to appreciate having, you know, read, read a fair bit about how this can be done well and how it can be done not so well. Uh, I really want to appreciate the, the, the point that Ms. Lord led with, that there's danger in a gesture without substantive actions as, as follow-up. And so like, I love the idea of, of this, of, of engaging with this as, as a beginning, that, that, that the land, committing to a land acknowledgement is, is the spark for the action that we then take. Because I, I sort of take a step back and say, okay, well, well, why are we doing this in the first place? And it's, so it's in response to this, you know, what Ms. Lord was, was referencing, that the horrific acts of, um, of, of many years ago, that, that started with, with, with the, the taking of this land, that we, that we now, in, in, you know, in a, in a, in a societal, cultural way, I'll, I'll benefit from. And that, that's a really complex moral problem to solve, right? And, and the last thing that I would want to do personally is do something quick just to like make myself feel better, right? Just to kind, you know, just to, to sort of like resolve that cognitive dissonance. So, you know, I, I, I really like the scope that, that Ms. Lord has articulated here of, uh, of using it as, as a beginning to, to explore, what, what are the practical ways that we can benefit what, what the current modern-day problems are for the Indigenous people that were affected by this action, right? You know, and then like, I, I think, I think a really great start would be actually identifying this and learning about specific Indigenous, um, people that were affected in, in, in our, you know, by, because we're the regional school committee, right? So like the land that, that, that in Amherst, that, and then what the history is there, and then what, what the, the effect of that was through the years, and, and what are, are those, you know, what, what the status is of, of those, those people today? And then, and then what can we do practically and effectively to, to assist them? There's some great, you know, suggestions here to explore about scholarships and curriculum evaluation. And, uh, yeah, so I, 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 I like the idea, I really like the idea of, of, of having the School Equity Advisory Committee engage with this, so, so they can bring it back to us. Because I really feel like this is something that needs digging into, right? That we can, um, but, but with, but with, with the committee committing to, to beginning the process, so, so that it is substantive and, and not just performative.
Ms. Lord?
I do want to apologize, I think I mostly spoke in historic terms, and I do want us to also know that Indigenous people are disproportionately represented in the prison-industrial complex, um, in the foster care system, lower life expectancy, and have been hit by COVID and voter rights. So it is still a, a present oppressed people that, um, I, I just wanted to also bring that forward, that there's still a lot of work to do for that community, our community. Thank you.
Ms. Stanser?
Um, I, I guess that was sort of along the same lines of what I wanted to say. I think it's important to understand the past, but I think we have to look today, because it's not a past problem, it's a continuing problem. So I, I think we have to acknowledge that as well. that as well.
I agree with what I'm hearing from everybody. And I, and just well, second, third, whatever, the, the notion that I really appreciate the work that you and with, with, I didn't realize until you said it tonight, that Ms. Stanser was also contributed to this, that it isn't just a statement or a, you know, sign, a sign on the lawn, that, that what you're proposing is a, is a comprehensive, multifaceted, multi-phase approach to this that goes beyond sort of the, the acknowledgement and includes the acknowledgement, I think, is important. And yeah, so I, I think, just, just to frame this conversation for tonight is I think, you know, we, we talked about this, I think last spring was when we first brought it forward. And, and so at the time, the, the school committees would give, give a thumbs up that we wanted to explore this. And so where we're at right now is, is that we're, we're exploring it. And, and I think, you know, if we're, if this is something that the committee is interested in, it's something that we could refer to a, a group such as the school equity advisory committee to, to work on and bring forth a more detailed sort of phasing and proposal for goals and implementation. Does that, so I'll just open it up again for comment or suggestions from the committee. Ms. Stanser?
Um, I'd just like to say, I appreciate the acknowledgement from Ms. Lord, but really, you know, my contribution was pretty small. I, I would also like to say that I, I don't know what her plans are, but I really hope that she might continue in a role with the, with this advisory committee, because I think she brings a really important perspective on these kinds of issues and, and can speak about them in a way that, that we can absorb, those of us who have not experienced these kinds of things. I, I, I think she speaks well when she talks about these issues. And I think her service would be valuable, should she be so inclined.
I see a lot of head nodding on that one around the room. So Ms. Lord, you have a, you have a campaign group here to recruit you for that advisory committee? Any other? Comments, ads, suggestions? Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I'm just that I really like the idea of referring it to the advisory committee, not because we want to disengage with it, but because we want to engage with it more in order to, in order to flesh out, how do we do this well? You know, because the, the thing I found troubling when I was, I was reading and researching this is that there are definitely have been examples where it's not done well, right? Where it's, it's been a hollow gesture, where it's been performative in, in corporate America and, and whatnot, and just, just checking a box and, and not focusing on exactly what we've just been talking about, which is the history has created currently, current inequity. And so how do we engage on this in a practical way that, that affects positive social justice for, for, for people? And I don't know what that is, right? I, I can't, I can't articulate today what that list of actions is. Therefore, you know, we need to engage on it more and not just jump to, okay, well, we'll just do A, B, and C, and then, you know, next agenda item. So I really like the idea of referring it and trying to engage, you know, the broader community on it as well, because this is obviously an issue that affects the town of Amherst and, and our surrounding towns and other school districts. I'm sure we're not the only organization that is, you know, concerned about this and wants to integrate it into our, our, our students' learning and our, and our, our culture. So, you know, see, see what comes of it. See, see if, if there's, if there's interest in the community for engaging on it more deeply.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes, I, I just kind of want to thank, not Ms. Lord, I just want to thank Hala for bringing this to the, the forefront and, and for, for doing it like, in like a, a very meaningful way to, to, and, and to focus on actually making this a statement with an action that, that follows. That's kind of, that's, that's kind of my thing. And it makes it real. It's not like, like everyone has said here, this can't be like a performative thing whatsoever, right? All things considered, there's, there's a history behind the name of our town. And, and we got there, vis a vis a certain route. And, and I kind of look forward to uncovering that with Ms. Heather Hala Lord on the, the advisory committee as well. That's also a, a hint that I'm going to be putting pressure on you to be at those meetings.
Great. So if there's no further discussion, I'm just looking around, then thank you again, Ms. Lord, for preparing this and, and so doing that work and bringing this, elevating this and keeping this on our radar and, and adding it to the commitments. So, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move that we extend our meeting by 30 minutes since we are past our two and a half hours. Is there a second?
Second.
And I think that was Ms. Spitzer, moved by McDonald, second by Spitzer. Take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stamel?
Stamel, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, next is future agenda planning. Our next meeting is on January 4th. And so right at the beginning of the new year. And that, because we have new members joining us from Amherst, we will begin with that meeting, with, to reorganize. And just for folks that haven't been on when we've reorganized, at the beginning of that meeting, we will not have a chair. So Dr. Morris will be chairing the meeting until we nominate and elect a chair for the committee. And then that chair will run the meeting from there. In addition to that, so we just moved our policy review, our ESR spending update to that, as well as SEAC. We'll also have an update on COVID safety and health and discussion, preparation for our four town meetings and fiscal year 23 budget. Our four towns meeting was postponed to January 8th. So that will be after that meeting. And I think within that budget conversation, we'd like to talk about that community survey or feedback form, not sure what we want to call it. Other topics? Okay. Next is a warrant report. And so one of our things that we'll need to do on, in that reorganization is to identify who's going to take Ms. Spitzer's role as the warrant review and approver for, on behalf of the regional school committee. So your last act there. All right. And tonight I have four, so bear with me. So I, Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature to scholarship warrant, to a scholarship warrant in the amount of $6,000 for the warrant dated December 10th, 2021. And this was signed by me on December 12th, 2021. I, Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $475,957.67 for the warrant dated December 13th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $395,224.83, revolving fund expenses of $33,585.11, and grant fund expenses of three, sorry, $30,763.22, and other funds in the amount of $8,384.51 for capital. And this was authorized, but first signed by me on December 14th, 2021. I, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $274,290, that's a zero, $90.54 for the warrant dated December 16th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $269,026.13, revolving fund expenses of $44, and grant fund expenses of $5,220.41. This was signed by me on December 16th. I also authorized by my signature, a student activities transfer warrant in the amount of $19,449.92 for the warrant dated December 17th, 2021, 2021. And this was all for other funds and that amount. And it was signed by me on December 20th, 2021. That's it. Okay, thank you. And we, next step is accepting gifts. And I don't see any gifts for us to review tonight. So with that, I'm going to, we're, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Union 26 Committee. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Demling, who is chair of Union 26, to call that meeting to order.
Okay, we just have one item when I call it to order. So seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call this meeting of Union 26 to order. And we'll just do a brief roll call vote. If you could just say your name and present. Ms. McDonald?
Present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Present.
Ms. Stanser?
Present.
And I'm the president. That's four. That's quorum. And so I will move to enter executive session in accordance with open meeting law of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22A, for the purpose of approving minutes only, with no intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Demling, second by Spitzer. Roll call vote. Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. McDonald?
McDonald, aye.
And Demling, aye. Union 26 is in executive session.
But before you exit, the region, I will move that the regional school committee enter executive session in accordance with open meeting law, MGLC 30A, Section 21A, to conduct collective bargaining sessions, APEA grievance, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare, and to approve minutes in accordance with the open meeting law, MGLC 30A, Section 22, with no intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by McDonald and second by Spitzer, and we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stamel?
Stamel, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And so we will adjourn now to executive session. For committee members, we have a separate link for that in our calendars. So I will say goodbye and see you in the other room.